What?
Oh, I want to make sure you're on. There you are. There's so many people on my screen right now. I had to find you. Okay, um, so let's roll call in and start this meeting. Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt here.
Marissa?
Marissa Carrery here.
Mary?
Mary Goldstein here.
Mayor LaChapelle? Mayor LaChapelle here. And Cindy Krasinski here. Uh, welcome to tonight's meeting. Um, before we do anything, I want to very quickly do a special thanks to Marissa and Jonathan, who this is going to be their last meeting. And um, I want to personally um, thank them for their incredible service, for their balanced thought and analysis, and for everything they've done over the years. Um, I am going to miss them very much. And um, I feel very confident about our school committee coming in, but I am still going to miss the two of you very, very much. And I'd like to give everybody a quick chance to say thank you, if they want to, um, before we go on with announcements. So if anybody has any chiming in they'd like to. Mayor?
Um, I, I would just like to affirm and amplify what Chair Krasinski said. Marissa and Jonathan, you both brought something uh, very unique uh, to the committee and some very unique times. Um, Marissa had several unique terms or, or different unique terms for, um, but thank you very much. It's been an honor to work with you and you have both taught me new ways to not only think about things, but how to say them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Dr. Leclerc?
I just wanted to echo the sentiments already made and thank both Marissa and Jonathan for being very calm voices throughout a very challenging last few years. And I really appreciate all the support that they've given the school district. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to add to that. Um, I especially appreciate Dr. Leclerc, how you said calm voices. I think everybody knows that some of us can get very passionate at times and we need that um, calmness. So I want to thank both of my colleagues, Marissa and Jonathan, for providing that and the balance and their wise words. Uh, Marissa has um, a plethora of experience that was so welcomed. And I really found her to be a mentor in so many ways, especially when I joined the committee. And it was especially um, unique for me to be on this committee with Jonathan, who was once a student of mine so many years ago in an after-school program for language. So to see you as such a brilliant adult has been a pleasure. So, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add, I think there's a lot of um, you know, wisdom, as Lori said, both Jonathan, you know, has very strong focus on libraries uh, and sort of that multimedia sort of engagement of our students. Um, that's really important and continues to be uh, really valuable, uh, and especially as we move towards having our new school. Um, the abundance of media centers and student engagement that's going to come out of that um, has only been strengthened by Jonathan being a part of our committee. Um, and Marissa, I just think that you bring a lot of passion and a lot of wisdom. Um, and uh, just really wonderful, um, even keeled uh, engagement uh, on the issues that we've worked on um, for so many years now, even before um, I was on this committee. Uh, I always appreciated you and definitely uh, thought you were a really stellar uh, school committee member to look up to and was really happy to join you um, four years ago. So, thank you so, both of you so much and both of you will be very much missed. Um, even as we look forward to transition and new opportunities and new people coming on, uh, the two of you will be definitely missed.
Thank you. Thank you for those very kind words. Um, it has definitely been a privilege and an honor to work beside you all and um, to serve the people of East Hampton. So, um, you know, a little sad to walk away, but I'm, I feel very happy and relieved knowing that we leave the committee in good hands with many steady experienced people staying on and some new passionate folks joining as well. Thank you all.
Uh, Marissa just took my words. This has been a privilege, a privilege and an honor um, to work aside all of you. And uh, thank you so much for the kind words. I'll just take a second because nobody mentioned it to remind you how wonderful Marissa's been uh, writing so many um, different documents for the committee over the years. I'm sure that will be sorely missed. And uh, I'll just throw out there real quick, you know, as I've reflected on my time here, this all, you know, my time on the committee very much began with um, diving headlong into um, supporting this new school and um, working on the campaign to um, get the, our community to, to pass and support that. And um, as we are on sort of the the eve of that school um, opening, um, I'm just so pleased with um, the progress and frankly, uh, maybe a tiny bit jealous for the students who get to attend such uh, an amazing building. And um, I'm, I'm really excited for the new folks who are joining and uh, look forward to great work from them to keep moving us forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I also want to announce, there's going to be three meetings in January. Um, January 3rd, January 11th, and January 25th. On the 3rd, it's going to be a pretty short meeting. Um, the purpose of that meeting is once sworn in, we have to decide the positions that we are going to have by vote um, on committees and chairs and secretaries. So, we'll have that meeting and that will follow immediately after um, swearing in. And then we'll have two regular meetings in January on the 11th and the 25th. Um, Dr. Leclerc, do you have any announcements before we go on to correspondence?
Yes, just very quickly, um, I wanted to let the committee know that um, as Jonathan said, we're right on the precipice of uh, walking into that new building. And we have a parent forum scheduled next Monday night. We'll show um, a video that we worked on with Pat Ruff um, around getting the students oriented to the building. Um, and we'll answer any parent questions or concerns about drop-off, parking, anything like that. Uh, moving day is the 27th of December. And um, we will have a closing house for White Brook Middle School on December 29th. We'll be getting that information out to the um, community this week. And it will be from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. And that's an opportunity for folks to roam um, in the school and take some pictures in front of murals and things like that. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, did you have your hand up?
Yes, um, I just wanted to add around the swearing um, in. So, if uh, members of the public would like to come to the actual swearing in of the school committee or the city council, they may do so at noon. It will be at the Public Safety Complex in the fire truck bays. So, um, we'll have lots of moving air and space for people to uh, space out. Uh, masks will be required.
Thank you. Okay, Marissa, do we have correspondence?
We do. We have a, a few items of correspondence. Um, first, we received a message from Richard Weinberg and Michelle Connolly as the um, White Brook Middle School Building Reps for the East Hampton Educators Association voicing some concerns about the timeline for the move to um, Mountain View School. We also received um, a quite a few uh, pieces of correspondence um, expressing support for expanding the presence of school resource officers in our school buildings. So, I'll list um, the names of people who are writing from that position. That included Michelle Thompson, Blair Ayalo, Carrie Southwick, Melanie O'Connor, Kimberly Jones, Jess Keef, Jessica Lucia, Ashley Alexander, Lisa Hibbert, Cara Cosaglio, Jessica Montagna, Christine Tadaro, Steve Tadaro. Um, and I think that is it. I believe I got everyone there. Um, we also had one message expressing concerns about um, police presence in relation to equity issues from Polara Goldstein Dia. And then we also received an invitation um, as we do annually to be participants in the Holyoke from St. Patrick's Parade on, I believe, March 20th. So, um, people who are interested in participating will need to send in their RSVP via Cindy. Sue.
So, um, thank you. So Sue usually does that. Um, she sends that letter in. Um, I would love to see us march again. So, I would be definitely willing to if uh, things go. I'm uh, looking at Lori put her hand up. So Lori's going to march. And uh, of course, the mayor will be there. And um, then anybody um, when, once we're sworn in can make that decision. So, the letter doesn't have to be answered yet. Um, we have some time. Um, I don't remember how much, but I knew it's past the swearing in time. All right. So, thank you. Um, do we have gifts?
I don't believe we have any gifts this week.
I didn't either. All righty. And um, now we're going to open a public speak. I'm going to ask that um, if you want to talk, you hold your comments to three minutes. And please say who you are, where you live, and raise your hand fairly quickly. And if I, if I don't see your hand, um, uh, I would definitely want you to shout out. So, the first hand I see is Tony.
Yes, good evening. I'm Tony Mango. I'm one of the Spanish teachers here at East Hampton High School. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you. I'm also the um, advisor for the World Language Club who um, coordinates uh, trips uh, with students to explore different cultures and uh, language. Uh, we have had, as you all know, a few year, a couple of years here, almost a year and a half, almost two years of sort of uncertainty about what's going to happen with our trip. So, last year we postponed our trip. We were originally scheduled to go to Europe. We canceled that. We then changed our destination for this year to go to Ecuador and the Galapagos, giving uh, the, the situation in Europe is a lot more volatile than it, it is in South America. So, what we're, we're, we're presenting to the committee uh, this evening is an opportunity to travel at our scheduled dates, which is from April 13th to, I believe, April 21st. We currently have uh, 16 students that are traveling, eight of which are seniors and four adults. All with, the adults all have uh, experience with travel and um, other safety precautions. Uh, I know that there are some reservations about travel, but I would like you to know that there's some great benefits uh, to travel. But I'll get into those in a minute uh, in a second or so. But uh, what I would like you to know is that um, Explorica and World Stride has put into place many precautions and checkpoints and protocols. They've been um, working with all these countries that they travel. As of today, they've had 60,000 participants traveling already. And uh, of all those cases, of all those people traveling, there was only one student who happened to have gotten COVID. And what they've put into place is pre-test and uh, going and post-test coming back. We are being monitored on a daily basis by um, professionals there. They are in contact with uh, the CDC and all the precautions that need to be put into place, have been put into place. Ecuador, in addition, does not allow anybody to travel without um, a clearance ticket that is issued by the government and also the Galapagos Islands. We also have to be um, vaccinated. The entire group has been vaccinated except for one student who will be getting her vaccination in a couple of days. Uh, I have spoken to the parents and the students and they feel strongly that they do want to travel. They are aware of what's happening in the world. They are taking the necessary precautions pre, during, and also when we return, we'll make sure that we isolate to ensure that everyone that we come in contact is um, has, is insured safety. Uh, so uh, I don't want to take much more time other than to say, we all know that uh, traveling is an extension of your education. It provides critical thinking. It provides you to have a broader perspective on life. It brings together everything that you've learned and it brings it into a practical view. So, I would like to have some parents and students, I've invited them to come along with us to um, give you their opinion of what's happening and hopefully to have you make a decision based on what uh, they have to say as well. So, if there's any parents or students that would like to speak for the additional time that we have, would you please uh, join in? Caitlin Paddock, are you there? Go ahead, hon. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Caitlin.
Unmute your button, Caitlin, please. Thank you, hon.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Paddock and I'm at East Hampton High School. And I am planning on going on this trip. And I honestly and uh, we have years.
Hey Caitlin.
Caitlin, turn off, turn off your camera.
Yeah, turn off your camera.
And due to this virus. And sorry, that's my dog. Um, I believe we have lost two years of high school memories and experiences and friendships due to this virus. And
Caitlin, Caitlin, I'm going to stop you. Caitlin?
Caitlin? We're all getting precautions, getting the vaccine. And you say we spend our time and
It's going to go very well. Caitlin, I appreciate it. Unfortunately, the connection isn't good. Is there another student or parent that would like to speak? Um, I can recap what Caitlin is, her sentiments are. They feel like they've lost a lot. Uh, they are aware of what the circumstances are. They're taking the necessary precautions pre. They're going to be isolating during the trip. We are a very uh, close knit. Well, there's only 20 of us that are going. We're going to be together the entire time. Very little um, interaction with other people other than professionals that are running these things. And the advantage of also going to Ecuador and the Galapagos is that we're doing outdoor activities, more so than indoor activities. Is there another parent that would like to speak? Uh, Caitlin, I do appreciate it. I'm sorry that didn't come through.
If, if I could just add while you're um, waiting to see if there's another parent, that I think from the school district perspective, I really appreciate Tony making this presentation to all of us tonight. I think that um, we've really, you know, we've had to make some adjustments to the trips in the past two years and the kids have really sacrificed. And unfortunately, some of those students have, have graduated and, and have missed that opportunity altogether. And um, I think that's evidenced by the fact that she has a large senior group this year because they've really been waiting. Um, I think that these students and their parents have really thought very carefully about um, this trip and really understand the challenges that they're facing and have done everything they can in working with this company. I think they've really done everything that they can to be prepared to be as safe as possible. So, um, from the school district perspective, I am in support of the students going on this trip in April. Thank you.
Okay, before too many people comment, um, this is under public speak. So, I think that was a slight error when uh, that got shifted around and added. During public speak, we're not supposed to interact. So, um, I'm going to try to rally it back to um, public speak time. If someone would like to speak, that doesn't mean you can't speak about the trip. Um, I just don't want anybody else um, from our committee commenting. Um, so if anyone would like to speak about that or anything else, please signal.
Cindy, you're muted.
Cindy, I'm sorry. I was trying to let someone in. I accidentally clicked and muted you.
Mr. Kiska is uh, waving his hand.
You're still muted, Cindy.
Hello, hello, could I say something?
Yes.
Recording in progress.
Cindy, you're still muted.
Can, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my name is Mark Kisa. Uh, I'm actually uh, our granddaughter is Abigail Townsend, who is slated to go on this trip. Um, and I, I know just reading, reading through all the Explorica documentation that they're doing and, and also listening to, to Ms. Mango, uh, how much research both, you know, her and this company has done regarding the safety precautions that uh, you know, I mean, I think the proper steps are being taken and, and I know the students are looking forward to it. So, I, I, I'm on board with it and I, I'd like to hope everybody else is as well. That was it. Uh, boy, we live in East Hampton on Hendrick Street, by the way. I guess I was supposed to say that. Sorry.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jennifer?
I'd just like to reiterate what um, everyone else is saying. My daughter is a senior. She's supposed to be going on this trip. Um, I think it's really important to her and everyone that's going that they're able to go. They've, the kids have really been devastated by everything they've lost over this time. Um, and you know, the, the kids are vaccinated. I think they're taking the necessary precautions. I think it's a really meaningful trip that's going to have um, long, just a, a great effect on them, great memories for the rest of their lives. And I think it's really important that they're able to take that trip.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? I'm looking. And I'm not seeing anybody. Okay. Marissa, do you see anybody else? I see no one. I'm going to close public speak. In a minute. All righty. Okay, we're going to close public speak. Um, and Gwen, thank you. Uh, Student Representative update. You are on.
Thank you. Um, so hello, uh, I have some updates for everyone about next week. So, Student Council really wanted to organize the week before we go on break to be about giving back and spreading kindness and joy to those around us. So, we created some events that we hope embody the spirit of those things. Uh, first off is um, from yesterday, the 13th to Wednesday, the 22nd, Student Council will be selling candy cane grams for a dollar each. Uh, in case you don't know, candy cane grams are candy canes that come with some kind of a note. Um, and they are given from one friend to another or they can be delivered to someone um, anonymously. They'll be passed out to students on Thursday, the 23rd. And the proceeds will go to Student Council and will be used uh, to fund future events. Um, this Friday after school, Student Council will be decorating the lobby with winter decorations such as snowflakes and white lights. We really want to clarify that the theme of the decorations is strictly winter and not any specific holiday. The lights are being put up to symbolize bringing light on the darkest day of the year, the winter solstice, which is Tuesday, the 21st. Um, on Monday, the 20th, Student Council will be having a hot chocolate day. Members will be giving out hot chocolate to students before school begins. Uh, we want to make sure that everyone gets to enjoy the hot chocolate. So, Student Council members will be there early so that C-Tech students will be able to participate and won't miss out. Uh, to show our gratitude to all the teachers at EHS, Student Council is organizing a Teacher Appreciation Day for Tuesday, the 21st. To show teachers our appreciation, we will be offering them a bagel breakfast. This Friday, Student Council will send out an invitation inviting teachers to participate. Obviously, if a teacher does not want to participate, they don't have to. Um, the bagels will be delivered to the teachers in advisory before classes begin on Tuesday. And the bagels will be delivered with some form of a note from students thanking the teachers for everything that they do for us. On Wednesday, the 22nd, we will be having an ugly sweater versus ugly sock day. Students are encouraged to wear their ugliest sweater or ugliest socks or both to school. And there'll be a competition to see who has worn the most unsightly garment. People can upload pictures of their sweaters or socks to a form that will be emailed to all students at the beginning of the day. At the end of the day, uh, a poll will be sent out to everyone's email and students, oh, and excuse me, the student with the most votes uh, will win. As of right now, Student Council has discussed uh, the prize for the winner being a gift card to Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks. But that will be decided tomorrow at our meeting. And finally, on Thursday, the 23rd, we will be having another trivia day. It will work very similarly to last time. Students will go back to their homerooms at the end of the day and each homeroom will count as one team at this time. Oh, sorry. Um, this time we'll be using a trivia game platform called Kahoot, which everyone is very familiar with at school. Like last time, Student Council will have a Zoom meeting during the game to monitor the teams and have tech support if needed. Uh, at this time, prizes for the winning homeroom are still being discussed, but they will be voted on uh, by Thursday of this week at the very least. Uh, so that is all that I have for right now. And thank you for listening.
That's a lot. Great. I love it. All right. Any questions about any of that? Okay, just sounds like a blast. I love all the ideas. So, great. Okay, Policy Subcommittee. My understanding is there has not been a meeting? Is that correct? You're correct. Okay. And Finance Subcommittee?
Yeah, so the Finance Subcommittee met, uh, met with um, Dr. Leclerc and Business Manager Director Del Dorian. We've uh, discussed sort of, started to beginning just our part piece of the discussion around the financial budget for next fiscal year. Um, and even though we know that our committee will be uh, changing uh, with Jonathan leaving us, it will definitely at least change by one member uh, in, on January 3rd. Uh, we did go ahead and set preliminary dates for um, those meetings. So, for our sort of review of the budgets um, coming out of the leadership team and Dr. Leclerc's uh, offering back to us to be able to review and approve. So, those dates have been set preliminarily, starting in, I think, the first week of February. Um, and so that we will then go from there uh, and review that again with the new committee um, coming in January. So, that was our conversation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, Jonathan, there hasn't been a collaborative update, right? There was some one for today?
Um, I have a few things to share. Um, we met last on uh, the 17th of November. Um, I think that was after, like the day after our last meeting perhaps. Um, pleased to announce they've once again received an A-plus rating on their annual audit, which is um, pretty much par for the course. Uh, there's a couple of folks who um, sort of manage the finance department that do uh, an incredible amount of work. And um, I mention that because there's um, going to be some shifting going on within the organizational structure of the collaborative. Primarily as um, those two folks, you know, is kind of being recognized that they have um, other things that they need, that the organization needs them to do. Um, and they've been finding, much like our district and a lot of places, that hiring folks um, who can really rise to the occasion for these positions is a massive challenge. And so, um, in order to um, rearrange their work in a way that makes the most sense and is the most efficient for the organization, they're actually going to be looking at outsourcing some of their um, business management um, responsibilities. And you know, along those lines, um, you know, that's far from the only place that they're struggling to hire. Um, you know, the, the hardest part is probably in human resources where those folks are supposed to be doing the hiring. Um, but one thing that's coming out of this, um, that I wanted to be sure to share with you is that uh, they are beginning work with um, a group called Mass Hires uh, to figure out how they can sort of quote unquote stimulate the pipeline of um, workers to address this hiring shortage across all school districts, um, looking to train people uh, to get them in as, you know, bus drivers and substitutes and um, cafeteria workers, et cetera. Um, so, you know, they're really, they're not just looking at their internal bit stuff, uh, but they're, you know, they're noticing that this is an issue everywhere. And um, true to the Collaborators' mission of supporting, you know, their, their member districts, um, they're really taking it upon themselves to try to find um, some uh, some new ways to, to get folks in um, to these many open positions across the state. The The last thing I'll sort of say about, um, that meeting is very like business oriented, so not too much interesting to share, but I will note that Dr. Leclair got a shout out at the meeting, um, for her work through the Mass Association of Superintendents. Uh, and, you know, the influence that she's had through that organization on the state's, um, COVID policies. So thank you, Dr. Leclair. Um, it's always nice to see, uh, East Hampton represented on that regional level. And yeah, the next meeting for them is January 26th, uh, so keep that in mind. Um, Cindy, that email I promised you, it's almost done. I just had one other piece that I didn't think of that I need to add to it, but you'll have all the info you need for the next folks.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. And I can tell you that, um, or I can tell the public that the feedback that comes to us about Jonathan's service on the collaborative, um, has been absolutely, um, positive. Everybody is really going to miss you, Jonathan, not only here, but at the collaborative. So I've already had people reach out to me and tell me, oh, Jonathan's going to be gone.
Well, thank you for sure. I appreciate that.
And thank you for your last update. Okay, um, our COVID update.
So we meet again next week. Um, we do have COVID cases in the district. We are experiencing a little bit of a surge among young people, um, across the state. And so, um, what we're finding though is the predominantly the cases that we're having are, um, from discovered through pool testing, many of our students are not even symptomatic at all. So, uh, and so far, it doesn't appear that we have any in school spread. So these are all, um, through activities outside of the school building.
Okay. All right. Anything else on that? Lori?
Yes, I would like to request from Dr. Leclair that we get notifications from all of the schools. Principal Belize has been phenomenal. She sends us, um, the email that is sent to the Whitebrook families about cases. And I know that it's not necessary, but it would be helpful to us now with this surge and with the percentage going up in East Hampton to, to know what the cases are like in the schools like we used to get.
Sure.
Can you, can you do that for us? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything else on that? Okay. Safety update?
We have not met. There's not been a request. It's initiated by this teacher union and it has not been requested.
Right. Thank you. Um, wellness? Lori?
Um, I, I would like to say once we are sworn in the new committee, we probably should talk about like setting up again, Dr. Leclair, um, meetings. I mean, it, it's been crazy because wellness became, you know, COVID response. But I, I still am, um, working to promote the Safe Roots to School program. In fact, I had a phone meeting with Julianne today, and we are going to try to move forward with the curriculum for our younger students and have the two phys ed teachers, um, have a seminar and get professional development from our Safe Roots to School coordinator, Lucy, who presented to us last time. So it's a win-win situation for all, that our teachers will get professional development credit and our students will get wonderful tips for how to be safe walkers and riders. So that is wellness, but, um, as of now, there really is no wellness committee. It's, I guess it's me right now, but I'd like to get other people.
It's all the same people that were on COVID response.
But we haven't met like for the wellness part. We just talked about like when we did COVID and that was really a different group. It wasn't the same group as wellness because COVID took over because we all wanted to be well. But now we want to prevent the spread, which we're doing great, but also be well. So we'll talk about that in the new year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So the next item is some pool testing for athletes. Um, that was requested to put on, uh, our, um, on our agenda. And I know, uh, Lori, did you want to speak first?
Yes. So as I've stated, the timing of the, the new COVID response team, which is very different from the one from the beginning of the pandemic that went through last school year. Um, it meets at a time that I can't meet. I did go on one day when I could, um, leave another meeting that I had. But when I was at that meeting, I believe that was the one in October, Dr. Leclair. It's like time is really speeding by. It did come up. Sarah Mocheck was the one that said that she would like to speak about, um, requiring pool testing for the athletes once the athletes move indoors. It was what she brought up and they were going to talk about it. And then I had sent, uh, text to Dr. Leclair asking for them to bring it up, but it wasn't brought up and I was unable to go to that meeting. I would like to say there was a lot of correspondence from other districts on the Mass Association of School Committees weeks ago, saying that they were requiring pool testing for their athletes. We all know that we've moved indoors now. Even if athletes are vaccinated and they say they're wearing masks, I've actually gone to a couple of indoor basketball games, not for our team, but the masks go down. And there are people around that aren't always wearing the masks as they should, as we all know. So because they are indoor and there is a greater chance of spread and the case rates are going up, I don't see why our athletes could not be required just to enter into the pool testing program, just to help prevent this spread.
Anybody else right now? Maren?
I mean, I think that that makes a lot of sense. I think that, you know, our athletes are sort of going above and beyond the standard, sort of educational practices of coming into our school and staying within our community. Um, they are going off into other schools and playing other schools. And so that as a, uh, precaution, um, seems like a really good step to helping keep our community safe.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Say, I echo these sentiments. I think it's the, sort of the least we can do in this situation to, to put in an additional precaution. Um, I think pool testing has been, um, hugely beneficial. If I heard correctly, Dr. Leclair, you just mentioned that a lot of our students have been asymptomatic and it's the pool testing that's picked it up, if, if I understood that right. So, um, it seems, it seems critical and, um, I'm fully in favor of it.
Dr. Leclair?
Yeah, so I, I am not in favor of it and I will, um, so I want to give you some, some data that I've collected to weigh, um, your decision. So, um, currently for East Hampton athletes, we have 83 athletes participating in winter sports. Seventeen of our athletes are not participating in pool testing, but 14 of those 17 are fully vaccinated. So there are currently three East Hampton athletes that are not vaccinated, nor are they pool tested. But in addition to that, we have two co-op teams during winter sports. So hockey seems to be, um, the group that I'll talk about. The swim team has 12 students on it. They're all vaccinated. And the East Hampton athletes are part of that group. For hockey, there are 30 co-op athletes. Brian Miller, our athletic director, has reached out to voluntarily ask those families to submit proof of vaccination because they're not our students. We cannot legally look them up on the state database. It's unethical. So we've been voluntarily collecting that information. He's heard from 24 of the families, of which 22 have provided proof of vaccination. Two are not vaccinated. And he's still waiting to hear from six. The challenge is that in three of the co-op schools, they don't do pool testing. They have no pool testing in those schools. So now it becomes an issue of equity. Our students have access to pool testing. Others, not every school does pool testing. So it's an unfair standard. And furthermore, I spoke with the MIAA who said it's not, um, there's no precedent for any school district across the state that's demanded a test this year for students participating in a co-op team. Um, I think it's important for us to collect vaccination data, but the other thing I want to point out, and pool testing has morphed and changed over time. The other thing I want to point out is according to the state Department of Public Health, if a student has recently had COVID within the past 90 days, they should not participate in pool testing. So how do we work with those athletes? Are we expecting them to pool test or not pool test? Because it would be difficult to have a requirement and then not be able to have those students participate. Furthermore, the state, um, Department of Public Health and the Department of Education is now suggesting that vaccinated individuals do not need to participate in pool testing. I'm not saying that that's where we're ready to go yet, but what I am saying is that there's, there's a movement afoot that is, you know, being, is quantifying who should be getting pool testing and who should not be. Now, I think that this board can consider an option such as for the three individuals at East Hampton High School that are not vaccinated that we know of, nor are they participating in pool testing, we may be able to say it's either or. You have to do one or the other. Um, and I think you could absolutely mandate whatever you want for East Hampton athletes. But if you mandate that for East Hampton athletes and you don't have the same standard for the co-op students, I think it does present an equity issue. And equity is one of the, the primary goals that we have in our community. So I just want to raise it as an issue.
It's interesting that you brought up hockey because I happened to speak to one of my students today. You all know I teach in another district, a district that is in the red right now. But, um, he happened to say to me that none of the players are even wearing masks and that's alarming. So.
And that's not true in East Hampton.
But they play against teams who do not wear masks or do not wear masks well. We have always gone far beyond what MIAA has stated, and that's how we've kept our community safe with lower rates of COVID. And if there is an equity issue, I'll say once again, there is free testing everywhere. Uh, there's more available free testing now than there was when we made it a requirement last year. So I don't believe that there's any equity issue, especially for hockey players that travel far, spend exorbitant amounts, exorbitant amounts of money on equipment, everything, and to say they can't go get a free test. I still say that we should have pool testing because we now are seeing the rates go up and there are breakthrough cases. These kids are not boosted yet. And we're doing what's best for our community.
So Dr. Leclair, one of the things that you said that I, I just don't agree with is, um, the idea that people, there are, there are people who are saying vaccinated kids don't need to be tested, but they're really behind times. Because you know, I know, Lori knows, anybody who's got anybody in school who's vaccinated is aware of the fact that we have breakthrough cases with vaccinated kids. And those numbers are growing. Um, my concern is I love the fact that we've done a lot of safe things. I love the fact that kids are wearing masks, but there are breakthrough cases that, um, happen with, in many, 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 unfortunately, that's fully vaccinated kids. Um, that's my concern. Um, you have basketball, you're up in people's face, you have hockey. Again, you're up in people's face. They're, they're smashing into the walls. Um, you know, it, the close contact that happens with other communities is what puts kids at risk. And if it was just a matter of our teams playing, you know, scrimmages amongst themselves, that would be a very different issue. Um, I think pool testing is efficient. It is, um, something that we're fully equipped to be able to do. And just because Desi says we don't have to, I do know that many schools are considering, considering doing it for their indoor athletes, um, already. They're already changing their mind because as we start to see more and more breakthrough cases, um, we don't want in-school spread. Uh, what I love about pool testing is it's so easy. And it is, um, you know, it takes a moment of our students' time. And it helps us to ensure that we have people, um, who stay healthy. And those who are not and who are contagious, step down. The other thing you, you talked about is those people who have already had COVID. And I understand, we're not asking for, if you already had COVID, we do understand and the nurses understand that you will continue to appear positive for a period of time. I think that's a different matter. Um, if people have stayed home and they've recovered, um, then you go the amount of time that you need to go until you can start testing them again. That's just my thinking. I think pool testing is the safe way to go. Maren, I see your hand up.
Um, yeah, thank you very much. Um, this question actually would go to, uh, you know, Bill, uh, Principal Evans, or, um, not seeing if the athletic director is on tonight, if this was a question. Brian is on here too. Well, either one of you, I guess, um, whoever could answer this question. Where do we stand right now in terms of, um, our winter sports? Just to, just for timing sake, are we already into the teams have already started playing, practicing, things like that? So if we were to suddenly add a rule into the season, that would be a question, uh, just something for us to consider from my opinion. Um, so if you could just clarify where we're at in terms of the season, since you've already nodded, yes, that we're already started it, just to give a little bit more detail on where we're at in the season already. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, so boys basketball had their first game on last Friday and they have a game Thursday. I think girls basketball had their first game yesterday. Swim, uh, had a meet over the weekend. And Brian, hockey, have they had a game yet?
Tomorrow night.
That's where we are.
So we're a little over two weeks into the season now.
Maren, did you want to say anything else before we go to the mayor?
Sure. I just, I think that, that, um, I mean, I already said that I think that, uh, pool testing is an important thing. I agree with all the points that, um, you made, uh, around the value of that and the exceptions to that. Um, and I think it's a factor that, uh, we should have probably considered this before we got into, uh, the winter team seasons. I think it's hard to, um, unless it's really a critical, important for step for us to make. I think it's a little bit harder for us to add a rule to winter sports since they've already started. So that's just would be one of my concerns that I'm considering, thinking about right now. But since the season has already started to suddenly require something different of them, um, and might shake up teams that have been practicing and preparing and playing games, um, that's a concern that I'm just considering, considering in my own mind right now.
So, um, the mayor, I know, wants to speak, but just in terms of that, i- if 83 participants in basketball are already participating in, in pool testing, we're not talking about major changes. We're talking about including in, um, athletes who are already showing up to practice and that pool testing could be done just as they show up. It literally takes a second.
Um, no, it can't, it can't be done. No, we have a team. Well, there's a team and there's a specific day of the week when pool testing is done. A team, an outside team comes in to the schools on, I don't know what day bills it, uh, you Wednesday bills?
Wednesday morning, yeah.
Wednesday morning is their day. And so they're only there Wednesday mornings for a couple of hours. There's a scheduled time.
I'm talking about like our basketball play. I'm talking about like our basketball players? They're showing up.
The whole school, the whole school.
The whole school.
Happens once a week on Wednesday mornings.
Right, because your basketball players, so there's.
I think, I think that Allison's point is that you seem to imply that they could just do it on the spot for practice or something like that.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm saying they're already there because I know if you're going to play, you got to come to school. If it's happening on Wednesday, you just are hoping that your, your student athletes show up on Wednesday on your day of testing. And they're there. You know, you're not talking about adding a lot of people because luckily, I think East Hampton's done an incredible job with getting people pool tested. So we're really talking, if this vote goes through, about bringing people kind of over the finish line. Because we do have very good numbers.
We do have very good numbers. And I know that the mayor is waiting patiently. We also have 82% vaccination rate for our students at the high school. So we've had five cases this entire school year at the high school. So there's not an exorbitant amount of spread or cases amongst youth at the high school. So I think that, I think we need to really make sure we stick with the accurate information.
Well, I'm not saying we're having spread. What I'm saying is that numbers are growing and we're going to be playing against other teams. And there are breakthrough cases. When I say they're breakthrough, I'm not implying that cases are erupting all over the place. But each school district has had to battle with breakthrough cases. So mayor, you've been waiting so patiently.
No, no, no problem. So I had a couple of questions actually for this. So one, actually, Mary already brought up. So the MIAA put out COVID protocols for winter season at October 22nd. So, you know, to have this conversation, we, we knew MIAA weighed in and to have this conversation sooner, I think would have been very helpful and hope we can do the same in spring if we're still concerned about or have to think about spring sports and COVID. And, and in their statement, and I didn't read the whole policy, but one part of it, um, you know, it's, so the NCAA policy should be followed. And that's the COVID-19 prevention and management strategy should be developed at the school and community level in, with federal and state, right? So when it goes on to, um, it says, "MIAA tier-one individuals who are vaccinated will be exempt from campus COVID testing and exempt from asking to be quarantined unless they have symptoms. Tier-one individuals who are not vaccinated will be subject to campus COVID testing requirements, isolation restrictions following a positive test, and quarantine restrictions as a result of contact tracing." So my question, one's clarifying. When they're talking about campus COVID testing, are we a campus, right? Is, is it what East Hampton High is doing? Is, is what we're following? Okay. And then when, it, it's kind of weird about when, when teams come to play at ours or we go to theirs. It seems that when we travel or people travel to our school, then they follow our policy. And, and that was one of the questions I had. So if, if you are a tier-one individual, you need to follow the campus COVID testing protocols of that campus, which would be EHS?
Yes, then we follow, we follow the Department of Public Health. Our vaccinated students don't quarantine if they're a close contact.
Right.
There is no quarantine if you're vaccinated. So we follow the same protocols as the Department of Public Health in East Hampton. Not every school does.
So I guess if we're, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the protocols where we're following, I, you know, our numbers are good. 83%, I mean, it, it, it's great. My, my concern is, or even how to put it into place, a team comes to East Hampton High and, and that district doesn't follow protocols, like doesn't follow to our level. Does it mean when they come, they must, they must follow our protocol and get tested before they play in East Hampton?
No, no, the protocols are as far as in, really, the decision has been taken away by the MIAA who ruled, I don't think it was in October, but it was in a subsequent ruling after that, that all winter athletes have to be masked for competition. Prior to that, it was at the discretion of different communities. So East Hampton could decide to mask and North Hampton could decide not to mask. But if North Hampton came to East Hampton, they would have to mask and follow our protocols. But then, um, as it got closer to the season, the MIAA just decided to mandate masks for all winter athletes.
But on, on testing, on pool testing or whatnot, is there any standard, like you go back to this campus, campus COVID testing? Like it could be different at every high school?
Yes, because not every high school has COVID testing. Hampshire Regional doesn't have COVID testing.
And mayor, that's why on the strand in October from other districts across the state, they were saying that they were going to mandate pool testing for their athletes. And once again, it's this lack of consistency that's more alarming because our athletes are going against the athletes that don't have protocol like we do.
Okay, now I understand. All right, thank you. That, I was just wanted to, I, I was getting lost in what they were talking about campus and the school. So thank you for the clarification.
And I also want to go. Oh, sorry. Go mayor.
Well, just off of what you just said though, mayor. I mean, what I heard though, is that our students are required to be pool tested with the exception with you have a vaccine. I mean, that's what I heard.
We have not mandated that requirement yet. And we have currently athletes that are not participating in either.
Okay, but I guess I'm confused. If MIAA made a, made a ruling on that and put that forward in October, no, you're saying no, Principal Evans. Can you clarify then?
She was talking about not wearing masks for during competition.
There was definitely a line in what she read that talked about COVID testing based on our campus has pool testing.
Exactly. Thank you, Mary.
If the ruling says that our athletes need to be following campus protocol and our campus protocol is that we offer pool testing, the exception is that they can be vaccinated. And that's a different conversation then. But that's what the ruling is. Then we shouldn't have three athletes right now who are not vaccinated and not pool testing.
You, you used the key word though, we offer pool testing. We do not mandate pool testing. It is not a requirement. We can't require that of our student body. You as a, you as a school. You could require it as, for your athletes. But um, again, with the co-op teams, we, we cannot require that of co-op, of the co-op athletes. That's what the MIAA told me yesterday. I talked to the head of hockey.
Right, but you can't require it.
Last year, we did require our athletes.
And it was, it was a state of emergency and you had more authority last year. Remember, you also had to decide whether, whether sports were played or not depending on our spread level. And there, that's no longer, you know, all the sports are happening this year.
Dr. Leclerc, I'd also like to ask about the number that you gave. And this is why I asked, so we get more updated numbers. Because there are more than five active teenage cases in East Hampton right now. So I'm not quite sure about the number you gave us. There have only been five the whole year. If there are five teenagers, unless the teenagers are still in the middle school. But I'm, I just, I really want to have.
They could attend other schools. We've only had five positive cases in our high school this year. And, you know, I, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to be contentious here. I just want to raise the fact that I think our high school's doing pretty, pretty good with just five cases, but we have a very high vaccination rate. And frankly, I am, if, if kids are leaving school and jumping in a car with five other kids to go home unmasked and hanging out for the afternoon, I think there's much more likelihood of spread there than there is on a basketball court where all athletes are masked. And that's, that's my opinion. But, you know, even with that happening every single day, we see kids jumping into cars. We still only have five cases at our high school. So our students are pretty safe. I mean, I think the high vaccination rate is, it's, it's much higher than area schools around us. And I think that it speaks very well to the safety of our students.
I, I agree. I totally agree. We have a high vaccination rate and we have our students masking. But some of the, the procedures, we were talking about doing this before winter sports started. Nobody knew that this new variant was going to start jumping and spreading everywhere. First, there's one case and it's not even in this country. Now it's in a number of states in our state, uh, in our country. So the game, the field keeps changing. And what we have to do, and just as we did this last year, is adapt based on the current situation. We could make all sorts of hopeful, uh, you know, wishes that everything would be great and then have something change. So um, I am concerned about unvaccinated, non-pool testing athletes. I am concerned about breakthrough cases that we have in all schools. I feel really confident about what East Hampton's done, but I would like to see us continue to do the best that we can. Lori, you were going to say something?
I agree with that. I think we've done so much. We've come so far and it's just one extra measure. And I just, I really took offense at the equity part of it. And that's why I said what I said. Because there, as I, there is free testing everywhere. And people are asymptomatic. And it's not such a hardship to have.
I think it is. I just, I disagree. I think it is a hardship for students. Students that live in, you know, communities that don't have testing available in their community. And we have a couple of those. One of our schools is Hampshire Regional. There's not a lot of testing available. You're asking students to get themselves to a testing location. Many of them don't drive, don't have a car. I think it is a, it is an equity issue. I, I, that's my opinion. And you can have a different opinion, but I think it is an equity issue. We are not holding the same standard for our co-op students.
Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I, the, um, the equity, I mean, or not, not even the co-op students, right? And the, the idea that Hampshire Regional, you know, students doesn't, they don't do testing or there's not a test available, like a testing site available. I mean, I, I hear that. I mean, but if the idea is to mitigate any possible transmission that results in infection. So East Hampton, I mean, I don't know. I think the most, the more people we get tested, like the more we contain this. Regardless if they're playing, you know, another team or honestly hopping into a car. I mean, when you said that, Allison, it made me feel like we should be testing because they have exposure that as you, as, as you and Bill and the AD on this and, and the teachers on this know that, you know, we have students for six hours at the very most. And then 18 hours, they are just out there. No control. So, um, yeah, I mean, so if, you know, the, um, yeah, so I mean, it makes me feel like pool testing is, is even more important. And then one, a clarification. So with the MIAA rule and masking, is it masking no matter where you're playing? Or is that because of our policy? Okay, all right.
Statewide.
Okay, thank you.
The, the last thing I'll say on it, I mean, I am really worried about the, the new variant spreading. I'm worried about the breakthrough cases that we have. Everybody's talking about a rise in numbers with the holidays. We're talking indoor sports now. We can control what happens with our East Hampton athletes. And that's, that's all we can do. You're right, they're going to interact with schools that are not so safe. But to me, that's a bigger reason why you do the pool testing. Because they're going to be interacting with other schools. And we can only keep our students as safe as we can. So pool testing is such an efficient, such an incredible, I, I consider it a blessing for schools. I know that for my own district, it has saved us many times from having any spread in school because we're doing that pool testing and we're able to catch things and send them home. Because you're right, the people who are catching this might be asymptomatic. But there are many people when they go home or when it spreads to somebody else that are not going to be so lucky. So um, again, this is something we can do to keep our school district as safe and our students as safe as we can.
Mary?
Um, I would just ask if our other council committee members, Marissa or Jonathan, have any opinion that you'd like to voice on this topic? And then I really suggest that we move towards somebody who has a strong opinion about this, making a motion. And then based on that motion, we can see where we end up with the vote.
I don't know that I have any words to add besides what folks have presented. I'm not looking to make the motion, recognizing that I'm not going to be involved in this, be on this meeting, but I'm certainly willing to vote on it.
Mary?
Can I ask one? Oh, go ahead, Marissa.
So go ahead, mayor.
I was just, um, was the board of health, or the health director for the city? I know that school nurse and they talk a lot. Was the, was the board of health director, was she consulted in, um, about the protocols? I don't know if that's Allison, Bill, Brian.
I haven't spoken to Bree about this. I didn't add it to the agenda. So I didn't, um, know what the intention of this, whoever brought it forward was. So I didn't, I didn't speak with Bree about it.
Okay, just wondering.
And that is why I wanted it brought forward. Because even though I couldn't be at the meeting, I wanted it discussed by that team. And Dr. Leclerc decided to not bring it forward. So that's why I asked to bring it forward tonight.
Do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to require all East Hampton athletes or athletes who participate with our teams in winter sports to participate in pool testing.
Okay, so one quick question on that. I'm not sure that we, um, I, I'm trying to figure out how we can require other members of the co-op to pool test. I believe that we can easily, um, require our athletes to pool test. But I, I'm not sure that we have the authority to dictate even another school who's in a co-op with us this year. I don't know if we can, we can require them to pool test. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, how many, how many of those students are co-op students, Allison?
There are 30 students that are co-op students on the hockey team.
30 East Hampton students?
No, 30 students from Hampshire Regional, Smith-Vogue and North Hampton High School. And North Hampton High School is the only school that does pool testing.
And there's also Hampshire Regional students on the swim team.
Yeah, I, so I'm wondering if we should adjust that to include the East Hampton athletes? And maybe we should. And maybe we should discuss this very quickly before we put a motion forward. Um, I think that we have control over East Hampton. I'm not sure we have control over other, other schools. And I think that might be the stickler that is not quite doable. How does everybody feel about that?
That's, that's fine with me. Even if we have the East Hampton athletes doing it, that will help to pick up things. And then maybe, I don't know, if they're not in the pool, I don't know if then things could be required if cases are picked up. Anything is better than nothing as far as I'm concerned, just to help this, just to help with this surge in the new cases.
So then can we change that to just be East Hampton athletes?
Bill, how hard do you think it would be to, to speak with the Northampton team? Maybe get them on board if they have pool testing there. Then we're not talking about equity.
Well, I don't think it's hard to reach out to Northampton. I don't know that I, that you guys have the, uh, authority to require them to pool test even though they have it available.
I don't think we do.
That may be, uh, that feels like it's above my pay grade. Um.
I, I really think, I, my sense is we can only, we can only talk about what's happening with our East Hampton athletes.
That's fine. I will rescind on my previous motion. No, how, can I do it that way?
Before you, before you make your next motion, I just want to remind us too of the point about people who have already contracted COVID and how that relates to the pool testing and whether or not we want to caveat for that as well.
Well, so my thinking is that there are, there are already protocols in place for when not to test. Um, so even kids that, and we have a high pool testing rate, um, in our district, students who get COVID, um, they're just taken off for a time period because they're just going to keep showing because even one little tiny like micron is going to show positive. So they're just taken out of that loop.
It's actually a 90-day, um, wait that they don't have to participate after.
I would like to, uh, ask that we can have the athletic director speak since he just had his hand raised?
Yeah, I just want to say that when I did reach out to the, the athletes and those who were not, um, participating in pool testing from Northampton, majority of them said they would be willing to sign up for pool testing. Um, you know, hockey, they're very passionate, so they'll, they'll do what it takes. Um, so I don't think that the Northampton, uh, parents, I mean, I can't speak, you know, across the board, but I think a majority of them would be on board with, with signing up for pool testing at Northampton. Obviously, Smith Volk and Hampshire Regional don't offer it so that they can't, um, sign up for that. But I think they are, Northampton parents are pretty agreeable to, to, uh, signing up for pool testing.
It may be that you worded as a strong recommendation for Northampton athletes.
Yeah, or a request, request, yes.
The other thing that I, again, going back to, uh, Mayor LaChappelle's reading from M I A A, um, the ruling in there also had the exception to people, students who were vaccinated. Um, and I just wonder if we want to consider that. I know that, um, certainly with this latest round, there's definitely more, uh, breakout cases that are, um, still students getting, or people getting sick, uh, even though they've been vaccinated. But I think that that was in that ruling. Um, and I would want us to consider that before we put forward, uh, the reworded motion.
Mayor? Um, so it, this has been spinning in my head. So I, I just, I, I'll preface it, I am in favor of pool testing for athletes. That's it. The pooling, the pool testing we have at the schools right now are opt-in, but not mandatory. And so legally, do we have the authority with athletes to mandate rather than strongly suggest an opt-in? And I don't know if that's a question like for Russ or there's a, a model policy.
There is a policy. There is a policy. The districts that I have seen that have, um, done pool testing for extracurriculars, um, Belcher Town just did a requirement.
Yeah.
They, they had a policy.
You can't, you know, you can't force kids within the school day, but this is outside of the school day. You are asking for something that isn't necessary.
Oh, okay.
So yes, we can, we can do that.
Thank you.
Uh, Mary, I, I wanted to get the mayor in before, um, I responded to what you were asking. Oh, um, vaccinated people still should be in this pool testing. If we're doing athletes, there are breakthrough cases. Um, I would like to see this motion have just East Hampton athletes get pool tested. Plain and simple.
So can I make another motion then? I would like to make a motion that we require all East Hampton athletes participating in the winter season to participate in mandatory pool testing.
Do we have a second? Mary, I can't tell whether you're about to say something or no. Mayor?
I'm not gonna second that. I, I would have a, uh, word amendment to it, but I'm not gonna second it as stated at this point.
How would you amend it?
Um, so I think that it's, uh, I think that we, first off, we've already discussed that, um, if a student who is not an East Hampton high school student, that we encourage them to participate in pool testing, either within their community or their school. But we do not, it's not a requirement to participate in East Hampton schools, uh, sports. So, and then I would also say from, for my opinion, uh, that we should also encourage students who are vaccinated to also still pool test. But I don't think we should be mandatory, man, mandating that they also get pool tested. So those would be my two requests for amendments on that motion.
Okay. Um, Dr. Leclerc?
I was just gonna ask, do you want to clarify in there and you can decide the starting date for this? I want to mention next week is an abbreviated week.
Right.
So we're collapsing all of our testing next week. And I'm not sure we would have the, um, 17, the 20 students signed up by, I don't know if it's next Monday is our testing day because we're condensing testing next week. So it's on a different day. Or if we want to make it effective for the first week in January.
Yep. That's a good point. Um, as far as requiring our, I, athletes who are vaccinated to pool test, most of them are already pool testing. I think we, um, I, I'm comfortable with just, just doing our East Hampton athletes. I'm comfortable with, um, starting it in January. But I, I think we keep it as simple as we can and most of them are already pool testing now. So it's not a big, it's not a big shift. Any other rephrase before we ask for a second? So I'm gonna ask Lori to rephrase it. Marissa, what were you gonna say?
Oh, um, no, if I'm sorry, I've sort of lost track of the procedure at this point, but I was going to second the motion with Mary's amendments for a, um, the start date in the first week of January.
So the start date in January and all East Hampton athletes?
With the exception for, um, vaccinated, encouraged, but not required for vaccinated.
I'm not comfortable with that.
I'm not either because I'm seeing it in my school every day. Kids who are vaccinated are getting COVID, Marissa.
Correct.
And kids who are double vaxxed and they're coming to me and now they're saying, when do I get boosted? This is what's happening in a district that isn't as safe. And these are the types of athletes, not that our team plays against, but some sports they do. But these are the types of cases that I'm seeing in my daily professional life that I'm afraid that our athletes are going to be encountering with breakthrough cases with double vaxxed kids continuously.
So can I just ask that you rephrase then the, um, the, the, uh, I'm suddenly blanking on the word. I apologize. Can you just rephrase then what you are actually asking to put to a vote and we'll see if there's a second and we can vote on it then?
Okay. Once again, I would like to make a motion that all East Hampton athletes participating in the winter sports season be required to pool test starting after the new year, that first week.
Now this is.
I said I wouldn't make a motion, but I will second that motion.
How does that relate to students who are not in our high school, but in our athletic program? I'm not understanding your distinction there.
We, I, I was just told that we can't require. So I know I have faith in Mr. Miller that he will reach out to the other teams and also request. And I also, um, listened to what he said about hockey players being passionate. Like the young man I spoke to today who was doing all he can so he won't get COVID. So I really think that hockey players who are seeing this type of behavior will do what they can and it's not an equity issue.
Lori, so I'm just asking, are, are you clarifying then that this is only for East Hampton high schools?
That's what I said. I would like to require it for everyone, but I was told we can't. So it's only East Hampton.
So it's the, the motion is only East Hamptons athletes and starting in January. And it's been, um, it's been, uh, posed and seconded. So, um, any other discussion before we do a roll call?
I know, I don't think it's my place to speak now, but can I just ask a couple, two clarifying questions before you vote? As the athletic director?
Um, yeah.
There's a motion on the table.
Yeah.
You would have to vote, two thirds vote.
Yeah. Why do we vote? Uh, we need to vote first and then you can ask questions.
Okay.
Because we have a motion and it's been seconded. All right, um, go ahead, Marissa.
Um, Marissa Curry, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChappelle, aye.
Mary?
Mary Goldstein, no.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzensky, aye. So we are, we, motion passed. Okay, Brian, did you have a qualifying question now you want to ask?
Yeah, so I had, um, we, you know, obviously been doing pool testing and a couple of weeks ago, we had an incident where a pool test, it came back positive. Um, they did the rapid test. Um, they all were negative. So then everyone got sent home and then they were required to go get a, a PCR test. Um, and so a few of the players lost like three days of practice and scrimmages and things like that, even though they were, they eventually were shown to be negative. Um, so we've only been saying pool testing, pool testing, and some of those players that they've lost faith in pool testing. So I'm assuming that it's okay if they just, if those players require, are getting weekly tests on their own since we've only said pool testing.
Well, um, Dr. Leclerc, so, uh, and maybe it's done differently in East Hampton. I'm just not aware of it. When a pool test comes back at our school and it either comes back invalid or possibly positive, then, um, we do a rapid test on everybody in that pool. And we go by the results of that rapid test.
So the pool was positive and all the rapid tests were negative.
So then that would have allowed them to continue to play?
They required us to send them all home. Cause one of them was positive, but we didn't know which one.
It wasn't showing up on a rapid test, so they needed further, we needed the pool to have further testing.
Okay.
So the rapid test was faulty because ultimately there was a positive person in that pool. The other, the other, the other difference here I think is worth noting. Um, the week that that happened, um, the, the company that's doing the pool testing was not able to get our individual results in a timely manner. Um, since then, we had one other, um, positive pool and the individual test came back, on the Friday, which was the first time that a pool test, they got us an individual, uh, test result without us having to wait for the weekend. Um, so I think Brian's point is a good one. Like there has been some inconsistency in the company's performance of, uh, in, in terms of getting us results accurately and quickly. Um, and as a result, in that one case, because rapid tests are not as accurate and that proved in that case, all those kids had to go home and wait until they could get a PCR test on their own. And so, you know, there was one, but all the others had to do that. So, um, I, so Brian.
And how many were in that pool? Cause there's not many. I believe it's 10?
It was only eight or nine.
It was, yeah, it was less than.
I think, um, what, what Bill is, is, um, articulating is in our district, each student gives two samples, one sample goes in the pool and one sample is put in a tube with that student's name as an individual sample. So if the pool comes back positive, the lab already has the individual swab to test. But they, you know, they don't do it fast enough for us. So we do our own rapid test as soon as we find out about the pool test because it takes another 24 hours for the lab to figure out who our kids are. But we want to know who's positive right in that moment.
Right, right. Which is, but it's a great backup that you.
And every once in a while, the lab gets bogged down. There's a power outage or whatever. They get bogged down. And this, the individual samples might take, as Bill articulated, longer than we had, you know, longer than 24 hours, might take 48, 56 hours. So by then the kids could have already gone and gotten tested somewhere else.
Yep.
But I think it's, you know, it, it's, it's an imperfect system because it's a crazy, crazy world we're living in. Um, I'm, I'm grateful that we're at least trying to do the best we can to make it through the sports season. Um, keeping everybody safe.
Can I, can I just ask if Brian, Brian, did you have another idea about that?
Well, my question was, are, can, are we giving them the option or is it just pool test? They have to do pool testing?
Oh, no.
I think, I think a pool, I think a PCR test is.
Absolutely.
It's, it's better than a pool test. So.
But the motion said.
I agree. So should that have been, should we have just been testing?
You know, we could make a, a quick amendment to that, that if people want to, um, get a PCR test instead of a pool test, that that's absolutely, um, you know, uh, allowed. I don't even, I almost want to say that's not even necessary as a vote.
I did say that.
You're still talking about testing. Mayor?
Yeah, so I'm a little concerned the way we're talking about testing. So it's really clear in the type of tests that there are the antigen test and then the PCR, which is for protein. So antigens before they attach to the protein, usually right after, um, the transmission or exposure will show up and actually rapid tests are very reliable if they're used properly within that exposure period. Once the antigen connects to the protein, it is only a PCR test that is going to pick up the COVID-19 or SARS, whatever virus in that. So I, I guess my, now I'm even thinking pool testing, I, I'm, it baffles me and my apologies. But, but now I'm concerned about the vote we just took because of, well, of course, rapid tests could come back all negative because the exposure now is in the fourth or the fifth day and only a PCR would, would take it, would, would pick up that, that virus.
But that's where.
Analyze the kid.
But that's where we go to the secondary layer.
You go to the next layer.
Doesn't come back soon enough.
24 hours is pretty.
The norm.
Pretty much the norm and, and pretty fast. So yes, it's not immediate, but it's. So yes, it's not immediate, but it's not a long time. It's not.
And so if we don't find somebody in the first sweep with the rapid tests, we usually find our person then.
Yep.
99% of the time we find our person with the rapid. This was an anomaly at Bill's school. So then we have to rely on the secondary issue, as you say, the, the PCR test.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And we send all those kids home. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And I do also want to get one more question answered because I know these are going to come up. Um, when we're not in school, we don't do pool testing? I'm assuming that you're only requiring it when the school offers pool testing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
It does seem though, from a protocol perspective, that we do need, if you're changing the type of testing to include pool testing or a PCR test, that we should have a vote on that as well. Would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
You want me to make that motion too? Is it just an addendum? Now that we've passed it, what's the protocol?
Yeah, I think we can just amend it.
So I moved to amend the previous motion that was just passed and voted on that we will also include PCR testing for athletes as a requirement instead of pool testing.
Right, as an option. Do we have a second?
Second amendment.
Hey, any more discussion? Okay, here we go, Marissa.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Marin?
I already voted no, so I'll just avoid knowing this.
Okay, Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. All right, thank you, everybody. Some of these things just take a little while to figure out. Um, so now to our superintendent update.
Yes, tonight we have an update for, um, the Healthy Youth Coalition, the, um, the needs assessment that they did this past year. And, um, Jonathan had requested this information, so we got it in right under the wire, his last meeting, we're getting it. So Jonathan, this one's for you. But I'm going to turn it over to Julianne, who's going to get us started and, um, talk a little bit about the process. So Julianne, welcome, Julianne Levin.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Um, all right, so I'm just, I'm going to quickly make the apologies for Rebecca Edwards, who's the Coalition Coordinator. She was here, um, until just a few minutes ago, when her babysitter ran, um, babysitting time ran out. So I'm so sorry, I did not expect, um, us to be going until 7:35. So anyway, my bad, I should be better about knowing how long school committee meetings go. She would love to come back and tell you all about the coalition, but I'm just going to focus on, um, the survey data, if that's okay with you all.
Mm-hmm.
I think Jonathan, that's what you specifically wanted to see. Um, so I'll just do a brief overview. Um, I did send, uh, to Dr. Leclerc and Sue Colby, um, the slideshow as well as the, um, Excel spreadsheets that show every single question, um, that is asked in the survey. Um, could I, uh, screen share, please?
Let me just. Yep, it should be all set.
Okay. Um, don't be nervous about how many slides there are, they go very fast. Don't even look, don't even look at how many slides there are. Okay. Um, so you, I'm not sure if any of you have had the pleasure of meeting Rebecca Edwards yet. Um, but she would love to come back, um, and present to you in the new year, um, about the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition. Um, she also works with Ann Telly, who's the, um, parent caregiver liaison for the coalition, um, as well as the PTO president, and is fantastic if you haven't met her, she's an, um, awesome parent in the district. Um, so they'll come back and they can talk to you about the activities of the coalition. Um, and there are a couple that I'll mention as I go through the slides that are, um, specifically relate to some of the data that we're seeing. So the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey is administered, um, typically every two years. Um, although this year we are planning a spring survey because, um, the survey that we did, um, on March 29th, 2021, um, was a hybrid survey with students participating at home as well as at school. Um, and so they wanted to, um, ask the same questions again this spring, once everyone is back in school, um, so that we can get, um, some information about how COVID, um, and the, and remote learning affected, um, students, substance use, mental health, relationships, et cetera. Um, it's typically done with grades eight, 10, 12, so because it's usually done every two years, you get that same group of students, um, every two years over those three, over a three-year cycle. So we've administered in 2017, 2019, and 2021. So we've now tracked this particular group of 12th graders ever since, um, eighth grade, so we know a lot about them. And I have a lot to tell you about them. Um, in 2021, we actually, um, did the survey with all grades eight to 12, because there's so many mixed courses. Um, at EHS, it was just easier to give it to everyone. So we actually have more data even, um, this year than we have in the past, which is exciting. And there were additional questions that were added to, um, the survey administration in 2021, um, specifically about COVID-19. And I'll share some of those with you. Um, and we did cross tab it all, um, by grade and by gender. I will, um, warn you though, that because, um, we don't have a statistically significant, um, gender population that is, does not identify on the binary, um, we don't have information about, um, that group of students. So, um, I, I think that group is growing and I'm actually thinking it's possible by this spring that will be a statistically significant group. And we might start to be able to get data, um, about the, those students and their substance use and mental health. Um, the one thing, two things I'll say about this administration. There was a question that was missed, which we're all sort of annoyed about. Um, and that was the perception of harm from the youth self-perception or perspective for the use of cannabis. So I won't be able to report that to you tonight. It's also a very, very long survey. It's about 130 questions. Um, and I genuinely want to talk about every single one of those questions and the data it provided because that's, uh, it, it, they're all so rich. Um, but I won't do that to you, but you will get all of those questions and their responses, um, by grade and gender. So if you're interested and have spare time and want to talk about, um, the implications of any of the data, um, know I'm always available and interested in that conversation. Um, so these are the questions that we ask ourselves as we dive into data. What do we have? What does it tell us? What more do we need to know? So I would, I would very specifically ask you all as, um, I'm going through this to be jotting down questions that you would want to ask of, um, these data. Because since we are administering the survey this spring, we have the opportunity to add questions to the survey. Um, and so we are taking, um, suggestions. So, um, the biggest part of the survey is a 30-day use question. And that goes through many, many drugs, um, and asks students what their use was in the past 30 days. Uh, we typically report out on just the four big ones. Um, but I will tell you, I think I only have three in here. Um, because prescription drugs, um, it's a small, um, it's a very small group of students who are using prescription drugs and it looks so small that it almost minimizes how, um, uh, important that use is and how devastating that use can be long-term. And so I didn't add it in because it's such a small, um, number, but I do want you to know that prescription drugs are not non-existent, and the abuse of prescription drugs are not non-existent in our community. It just, it looks like a small number and you may think, oh, we're doing so great. Um, but it's such a devastating impact, um, that I don't, I don't want you to ignore that, even though I haven't put it in the slides. Um, and also forgive that these graphs go above 100%. I couldn't mess with the Y-axis. I don't know what to say. Um, so 100% is what we're actually looking at. Um, as expected, with alcohol, eighth, um, grade, so you'll see the eighth in each of the slides is blue. Um, that orangey color is 10th and green is 12th grade. Um, so you'll see use for, um, alcohol increases, um, in 30-day use by 12th grade. Cigarettes, we're doing a really good job with. Um, nicely done, everyone. Not very many kids want to smoke a pack of cigarettes. More of them do like to however smoke e-cigarettes, um, jewels, vape pens, and other electronic vapor products. So while, um, I think the, we, we've done a good job with cigarettes, the vaping products are very much still, um, part of our community. Cannabis, um, and alcohol are definitely the two biggest, um, substance uses of, um, our youth population. Anyone interrupt and tell me to go slower, this is, but, you know, there are a lot of slides. Uh, when students were smoking can, I'm sorry, using cannabis, um, they were mostly smoking it. Um, then goes down in order, vaping it, dabbing it, eating it, um, and drinking it. And again, you'll see 12th grade use, uh, much higher than 10th or 8th grade use, which is almost non-existent. Um, the perception of harm is probably one of my favorite questions. The question asks, how harmful do you think it would be for a youth to drink one to two alcoholic beverages daily? So it's a perception of harm for, um, themselves. Um, by 12th grade, that seems like to a significant portion of the 12th graders, um, not a risky, um, activity. Um, definitely more risk when we get to binge, what we call binge drinking, which is five plus alcoholic beverages once or twice a week. So the one to two daily didn't seem as high of a risk, but definitely binge drinking is seen as a risk. Um, this is, again, we've done a really good job with cigarettes, uh, one to two packs of cigarettes daily. Most of our students know that that is, um, very harmful. It's interesting to see, um, the eighth, 10th kind of switching there, but, um, you'll, you'll notice that it's definitely much, much lower than the alcoholic drinks. This is interesting. Um, definitely not, um, as glowy of the perception of harm for alcohol and cigarettes. Once we get to, um, vaping, students really don't know the risk to themselves, um, quite as profoundly. Um, this is, so again, another perception of harm, um, question. This is asking whether your parents think it would be harmful for you to drink one to two alcoholic, um, drinks every day? Parents sending, oops, that's my timer telling me I've already been going on for 10 minutes. So sorry. Um, so, uh, parents giving a good messaging about, um, how wrong it is to drink, um, one to two alcoholic drinks daily. Definitely good messaging around, um, how harmful it is to smoke cigarettes. Um, still pretty strong, our parents, I think, um, in this community have done a great job of talking to students. There is a question I didn't, um, included in the slides. Um, there's a question about, have you had a conversation with your parents about substance use? And it's a very high, um, return that most students have had a conversation with an adult about substance use. Cannabis, once again, kind of throws our numbers off. Um, so interesting to see that there are, that there's a, um, perception among 12th and 10th graders that their parents do not think it would be wrong at all for them to smoke, um, or for them to use cannabis. So another one, interesting. Um, and this is where, remember I told you we didn't have the perception of harm question for youth? That's a question we really want to ask because we're very interested, um, if youth think it's harmful to use cannabis. Uh, ease of obtaining substances, another really interesting one. Um, certainly, if you look here, less easy to get cigarettes than to get alcohol. Um, pretty easy for our 12th graders to get, uh, vapes. And i- interesting, um, for cannabis as well. 12th graders, again, pretty easy, not as easy as vapes or alcohol. Um, so always nice to see students overwhelmingly choosing health as the reason for not using drugs. So go health curriculum. Also some other, you know, it's nice to see students wanting to be, um, positive role model, making teachers and coaches proud, parents and guardians proud, following the law is always lovely. Um, so their students know that there are reasons not to use drugs. All right, so these are the COVID-19 questions and I broke these down by, um, the binary genders, um, instead of by grades. Because across the grades, um, their significance was actually less than by gender, which I find really interesting. So there was a greater difference between how females and males responded than how eighth, 10th, or 12th graders responded. So I broke it down a little differently for these slides, just so you could see that things were actually very different, um, for the experience of, um, those who identify as females and males during COVID. So here, um, many more females worrying about getting sick from COVID. Um, across the board, both in the, um, regular mental health questions, but then these specific COVID-19 questions. Um, the females responding as feeling much more isolated, lonely, sad and depressed. I mean, this is fascinating to me, the, the noes combined there for the male respondents are about 75%. And, um, the opposite is true for the, um, the girls, the females. Um, again, feeling restless, nervous, anxious more often. And the more often, so there's a, the mental health questions at the beginning of the, um, survey are like, how often do you feel restless, nervous, anxious? These questions were because of COVID-19, um, how things changed. So in relation to when the pandemic started, are you feeling restless, nervous, or anxious more often than prior to the pandemic? And again, you'll see here, um, the female respondents responded much more highly to this than the male respondents. And they felt it physically as well. The female respondents feeling much more physically, um, stomach aches, headaches, body aches in relation to their anxiety, loneliness, depression, um, isolation. Um, and, you know, this is always good information for adults to have. Um, the stress level inside my family has gone up, so students noticing that, um, their families are also feeling the effects of the pandemic. Um, here I think it's interesting that the green is the, um, about the same, so um, for both females and males, they both said yes, but then the more, um, the yes with the exclamation point, many more female respondents, um, selected that. So it's interesting how they do the breakdown, um, and on which questions you get that really exclamatory yes. So that's the end of the slides I decided I was going to share with you tonight in the interest of time. But I want you to know there is, in those 130 questions, much more information. And so what I would, would love for you, um, to think about, um, if there's anything on this list, uh, that you want to see the data on, um, just shoot me an email. My email's on the next slide, although you all know my email, who am I joking? Um, and, uh, but also if there's a question that you think you really, we should really start collecting data on, um, please also send that my way so that we can include it in our next, um, round of surveying. Um, I think some of the very interesting, um, questions that I didn't include, um, are about, um, writing and driving with intoxicated drivers, um, and driving and writing while distracted by screens. Um, not a lot of high respondents on intoxication while driving. Very, very high response, um, driving or writing with a distracted driver by screens. So probably a lot of the stuff that you already know about and can guess, um, but just wanted to share this all with you. And, um, if you have any questions, you can ask me now. And Rebecca would, would love to come back and tell you more about the coalition's work and also answer any of the questions about the data. I'm going to stop my share there.
Any questions, comments? Questions or comments?
Yeah, Mayor. Oh, I don't get to call people.
Yeah. I'll, I'll really answer anybody, um, whether I should or not. Uh, will this, the full report be posted on, uh, the school website? And we would love a copy to put it up on the city website too. Um, kind of as a flash, so people, I know those, the surveys are like chock full with, with.
Yeah, it's so long, the, like, and it's rich, it's rich data. I would, I really would love, you know, it's one of those things. I really would love, you know, it's one of those things where it's like, would be really important to sit down and go through every question. It's probably not the most urgent thing we're doing right now. But it's, it's great, great information to get about our students' experiences.
And is there, oh, sorry. Is there a way or a tool to take, like, I think it's interesting, it's the same group of kids who are now seniors and to like do, I don't know, some kind of easy comparison for somebody like me, like just to see what, I think it would be curious to see what has happened and then the whatever happened in COVID. So.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Those, I know, those, I think maybe that's something that we can come back and present with Rebecca is maybe that, that group of 12th graders going from eighth grade to 10th grade and then to experiencing COVID in 12th grade. It would be interesting to see how their substance use and mental health changed over that period. We would love to. I would love to. I'm speaking for Rebecca, but I feel totally confident saying she would love to as well. Yeah.
I think that's great.
Great. I know you still have much more to do tonight. So thank you all so much. Marissa, Jonathan, don't leave us for real because we have so much more work to do. But if you don't want to come to school committee meetings anymore, you don't have to.
I just want to thank you very much. I think it's really important information for us to know about our community. The way you broke it down, what you shared with shares, great. And it's lots of good stuff and do look forward to a follow-up meeting to sort of see how our students are going through, like comparing the same students across their life as well as the sort of current snippet of our community. But yeah, I think it definitely warrants some additional conversation and reflection on what we can be doing to particularly the perception of harm. And I would like to see more in that follow-up presentation, some of the pieces about driving. And our students striving in this community and their perceptions of harm in terms of particularly texting, but also intoxicants. So.
Thank you. Julianne, can you please give our apologies that we went so long in the first part so we couldn't have Rebecca's presentation? But thank you.
You know, I, it's totally my fault. It's also her first school committee meeting and she was like, okay, now I understand. I'll, I'll plan better for my next one. I was like, yep, no, no worries, no worries. We all get caught up.
We were hoping by this time of the pandemic, we wouldn't have these long discussions. About pandemic related issues. So sorry and thank you.
I always, I like to put in a plug for working moms who are trying to make it to meetings. So you know, I, I think it would be great if when we have guests who are here to speak, if we could put those agenda items earlier on the meetings, that way we don't have this, you know, I would hate for someone to be paying for hours and hours of babysitting while all the school community members are debating tiny nuances and related things.
Yeah, that's, that's actually, you know, a good idea. Usually I think what we do is we put those presentations a little bit earlier if they're going to be long. And I think we just, you know, I think you just have to shout out because we can rearrange as long as it is on the agenda, we can do some adapting.
Okay, sounds good. And similarly, I feel very bad for Tony and the whole crew waiting for our vote on the trip. I wish we had done that.
Yeah. Can we move Tony's section or the vote up in this next section? I'm all set. Thank you, Julianne.
Thank you, Julianne.
She's letter H, Cindy?
Yeah. So we can move that one to the top. So does it, when is this field trip?
It's in April of 22. So it's the spring.
So I, I do have a question about it. So our school planned during these COVID years to try a few field trips, you know, like this. And one of the things we were able to do is have a back out clause if the world goes haywire. And is that possible in this trip? Or is this, say you lose your money if you don't go, no matter what happens? Do you know, Allison?
I, I do not. Tony did email me about it because I, you know, was thinking we had some time. But she did have a response. So Tony is still on the call. So maybe she can respond.
Hi, thank you. Yes. There is a cost in light of what's happening in the world. Explorica has been very cooperative and very helpful to us. There is a cancellation fee of $3.99, but the decision has to be made shortly. One of the issues is that the parents that I, I polled, parents and families, they still want to go. And so that, that cost that's going to be incurred, they don't want to pay that $3.99. So that was one of the things that, you know, I, I wanted parents to speak to you about, but there is a clause to go out and if Explorica cancels, then they would, based on, you know, what the findings are. And like I said, they have several people on the committees in the country and obviously here as well that are constantly, constantly monitoring what's happening with the world situation. They could also cancel. They don't charge us a fee, but, but as of now, travel is set to go for April and they are not canceling. So if we cancel, families and the students incur that, that expense. A little bit winded, but I hope I answered your question.
Well, for myself, I wouldn't be interested in necessarily canceling now. I'm just curious as we get closer, what the option is. Again, my hope, I'm every optimist. My hope is that the numbers are going to go down. And we're going to find that boosted teenagers are doing really well and that everybody else is doing really well against this variant. I just, I can't, this is just the craziest time to be trying to do anything. And I just, I'm hoping that there's an escape clause that, you know, if the world falls apart again.
If I could add to that, I understand exactly where you're coming from. And I presented that to the students, I presented that to the families. There is, the only thing is the cancellation and it would have to happen now. There's time, time is needed for these, the companies also to make these arrangements. There's a lot of little pieces that they've been working, they've been changing in order to ensure our safety. They change certain procedures where we go, sorry about that, my dog, how we go to where we go. We're doing a lot more outdoor activities to ensure that we're limiting the amount of time, the amount of time that we're indoors. Again, we're traveling on a coach by ourselves. There's a lot of things that have been put into place. Unfortunately, there isn't a last minute escape clause because we have to make sure that the company has enough time to, you know, work all the details out for us. And like I said, there've been 60,000 travelers so far with Explorica and Worldstride. All the procedures have been put in place. They are on top of it. They are very good. I can't get, there's no 100% guarantees in anything in the world, obviously, but I know that they're doing the best that they can. And I presented everything that I, to the parents and families and they strongly want to go. These students and these families want to go, want their children to go. And so.
The other thing I would just toss out is that we can't stop people from traveling any other time. I mean, we, if we stop this trip, that doesn't mean that we're stopping people from traveling and traveling to other countries. If travel was stopped, then you're saying that the, you know, I'm thinking, you know, there, if they shut down and said you're, you're not traveling to other countries. Or we're not accepting you back and there's, or this, you know, quarantine time period. So in that case, the company would refund the money to the families. Okay.
Yes. Yes. That's a completely different scenario. And in fact, they, you know, last year they were prepared to, you know, stop everything. But based on, you know, the guidance and discussions we had with Dr. Claire and Mr. Evans and the families, we decided to completely postpone it till this year. And there were a lot of seniors last year and this year we have about half, a little bit over half that are seniors. And as you heard, unfortunately, the, the connection was not very good. But as you heard, that these, they want to have some piece of normalcy with the understanding, and I'm very adamant with the kids I talk about to them all the time. We need to make sure that we are isolating right before the trip. We're making sure that on the trip, everything is, you know, we're changing masks two or three times a day. I'm, I'm bringing extra. I, I'm really on top of them, understanding the importance of the pre, during, and obviously when we come back as well. The families are aware of that. I think we're, the group of kids that we have, many of them are also athletes. I would, I would be fine with them getting, making sure that they are in the pool testing weekly until we leave. Many of them, I think, already are. So I think that, you know, I think Mr. Garcia was saying, you know, everything is, a little bit is better than nothing. And I think all these kids are doing their share. They're doing what they need to do to make sure that they're safe. And, and you know what? It doesn't guarantee that, you know, later on, they don't travel on their own and then come back to school. I know that I can ensure that while we're on the trip, the safety protocols that Explorica has, I will be making sure that they are being observed by the students while we're on the trip.
Lori?
Everyone's probably nervous. Oh no, she's going to weigh in. But I just want to thank you, I want to thank you for all of the diligent planning you've done and the communication with the company. I've taken students abroad in normal times and it's so much work. So I really admire what you're doing. And I would like to tell the committee that I did have to travel internationally because of a family health issue last summer. And I came back saying I felt so much safer in Europe than I do here in Massachusetts. And even a trip to New York this past weekend, I felt safer there because you can't get in anywhere without a vax card and a picture ID. So for people that think, you know, we're all safe here in Massachusetts without these mandates, it's actually safer in other places. So thank you. I do worry though, I just want to make sure Explorica would give a full refund if their airlines back out. I know a trip that was planned with my students right when the pandemic broke out. They never got back their money from the airline, which was very unfortunate. So just, just make sure that's all covered.
Yeah, I, I really thank you and appreciate your support and saying that I'm in planning. And also the parents and these students, you know, they're really going out on a limb. They're working extra to get this trip cost. It's not a cheap, it's not a cheap trip. There's a lot of pieces. I have to say that last year with Explorica, they had a cancellation policy and I worked very closely with them. And I really was able to get everything back but $99 for these families, for the kids that weren't able to, you know, postpone the trip. So I know that they're very good and they, they really do care about the students. They, their Worldstride has been in business for over 50 years. Explorica is working with, has been purchased out by Worldstride. I really, I, I also appreciate what you said because the Galapagos will not let you enter without a transit card. These are, these are endangered areas, obviously in terms of the fauna, the, you know, the flora. So they want to protect their island. They don't want anything coming in. So they're making sure that whoever enters that country has their vaccinations. They have the transit card that's been approved by the government. Again, I, I don't want to say that 100% approved because the world is what it is. But they are doing everything that they can do to ensure that the safety of the travelers that are there and also of, of people that are part of the Explorica trips.
Maren?
Yeah, I would just, I think that it's, I think we've had some good discussion about this. We've had some, you know, and I think that for the most part, the risk is on the people who are participating. And I think that, that we basically leave that risk up to them and to their teacher to be able to manage and mitigate the risk and the cost. So I, without further discussion, I would like to make a motion that we approve this out of country trip.
I will second that.
Any more discussions? No? Okay, Jonathan.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mear. Oh, you're, you're muted, Mear.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Lori?
Laura Garcia, cee.
Marissa?
Marissa Crary, aye.
Wow. Okay. Cynthia Kuzensky, aye. The trip's on. Let's hope for a safe world.
Muchisima gracias. Hasta la vista y buenas noches a todos.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
And Jonathan Smith, you were, Schmidt, you were mine at once. Were you one, one of my students?
Back when you were still a white brick, yep.
It's so lovely to see what you've become. Keep going. See you later. Bye-bye.
All right. So we took, we took that one and put it up top. Now, Marissa, are you ready for our approvals?
Yes. Okay. I make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 9, 2021 meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Crary, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mear.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Lori?
Laura Garcia, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzensky, aye.
Make a motion to approve school payroll dated 11/4/2021 in the amount of $553,695.96.
I'll second that. Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Crary, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Laura Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzensky, aye.
Motion to approve accounts payable authorization for payment dated 11/4/2021 in the amount of $741,819.38.
Second that motion. Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Crary, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Laura Garcia, aye.
Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
Motion to approve school payroll dated 11/18/2021 in the amount of $562,362.26.
Second that. Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Crary, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Laura Garcia, aye.
Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
Motion to approve accounts payable authorization for payment dated 11/18/2021 in the amount of $466,656.
Second that. Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Crary, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Laura Garcia, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
Motion to approve school payroll dated 12/2/2021 in the amount of $762,612.72.
Second that. Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Crary, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Nicole LaChapelle, aye.
Laura Garcia, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
Motion to approve accounts payable authorization for payment dated 12/2/2021 in the amount of $112,869.87.
I'll second that. Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Crary, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Lori? And you can delete, you can delete the last one.
Yep.
Laura Garcia, aye. Sorry.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye. And yes, Sue contacted me before the meeting. We don't need to vote on the school choice opening request.
Okay, very good.
So we are going to go into executive session after we do other. And we will be doing strategies concerning the collective bargaining with the East Hampton Education Association, and we're going to adjourn from there. But before we close and do that, is there anything under other that people would like to talk about? I have two things I want to toss out just for future meetings, but not now. Jonathan, anybody have anything under other that they would like to toss out or discuss?
You already generously gave me an opportunity earlier to thank you all. So.
Okay. Anybody? Okay. The only thing I wanted to say is we have a couple of things that have been coming in with correspondence. And I think that we should, when we have our full new committee, talk about putting on the agenda a couple of things that have risen. One is requests for parent forums. One is requests for parent forums. I know that we had forums during the very beginning of COVID. They were pretty successful for getting information out, and there is an interest in continuing that. And I think that once we get together with our new committee, we should be discussing that and put it on the agenda as to how often, whether or not to do it, and go forth. So that, for me, is something I would like to see us discuss in January. Also, there's a lot of concern and interest for and against for the SRO positions. There, you know, we have a lot of correspondence. And my sense is that at a future meeting, when we have our new committee, that is the time to talk about that issue. So those were just my two perspectives on that.
Cindy, I would just say that if we have a conversation about the SRO position, I think that we need to have include in that conversation a presentation on all the new safety and security measures that are going into our new building. Having just done the last tour of our new school, we have quite a bit of safety measures in place to protect our students. And I don't know the exact time, but it's probably less than two minutes from our public safety complex to the new school. And so between those measures and the proximity of our school to those public safety complexes, I just think that's a very important factor to include in that conversation. So if we're going to talk about the SRO position, I'd like to talk about, include in that same talk, the presentation on safety measures at our new school.
Yeah, I think that's just all part of it. I think, you know, information has to get out to the public. And we just should do that openly and publicly and thoroughly. So it's, it's just.
Are you going to also include in that the safety precautions that have been done in other buildings that have had mass school shootings? And are you also going to include your thoughts and feelings about your children's safety if there's a shooting at the new school? And if two minutes is sufficient or not? Thank you.
Okay, we cannot do a back and forth. Public speak has gone at another time. When we put on the agenda all of these issues and the information, then there'll be a public speak time. And between now and then, I suggest that the public continue to write to us as we read all of the emails that are sent to us. Is there anything else under other that people would like to talk about? All right, then we're going to roll call into executive session. And we'll go on with our portion. And I thank everybody for showing up. And we'll see you in the new year with a slightly new and old team. All right, so Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Lori? Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Thank you.
Laura Garcia, aye.
Cindy Kuzensky, aye. Okay, thank you. And we will go right into executive session. Thank you, everybody.